Hey, uh, as we're getting started, there was discussion last year about, you know, where it was just, it was put on the mayor's office to make cuts. And I wanted to show council, it's not a third-class city, it's a 2A. But being that they are, our optional charter ends up looking very similar for how council and strong mayor governance works in a 2A city. So I want to give you the first seventeen pages of Scranton's budget on council. So you can see how that gets passed in their context with amendments. And it is something where if there's something that needs added or cut, the council, council takes that action. And it just peruse it when you get home. So you can see, you know, what that ends up looking like for priorities of savings and for, for the responsibilities we have in passing a budget. The mayor has the responsibility of proposing a budget. He's done that. But if there's, if council believes that there's areas to save, that's the responsibility of council to come up with. We did our reorganization and I think that'll give us a much better position to throughout the year, address it as we move forward for next year's budget. But I wanted that to be in the front of people's minds when looking through these meetings. Did Ed move his microphone as soon as? Remember, we're not supposed to touch the microphone.
Right, it looks like it's still in the same place.
Alright, alright, anyways, so with the agenda, the first department up is the mayor's office.
Yeah, I'm just gonna kick it off. We think we're presenting a realistic band of data and trends that are occurring. We tried to be very realistic and look forward to talking to you throughout this. Any suggestions you have are certainly most welcome. The budget's based on real numbers, the budget that we're presenting. And there have been, as you probably are well aware, there have been some increases over the last year to eighteen months or so, just because of inflation and that caused. But this will be the fifth year in a row that we have not increased the finance charges, you know, the people pay to live here, that sort of thing. We kept the taxes in line. So there are a couple of fees that are going up, and it's to cover increased costs. And we're certainly hoping, and we want to listen to you as well, and we want any input that you may have. Anything we could do better than what we've done, we'll certainly listen to and we'll do it, as long as it works. So thanks very much. And if you want to take a look at the office of mayor, it's on page twenty in the book. I don't know what's, yeah. And this gives you, we're pretty pleased with this. The amount budgeted for personal expenses is just a little bit lower than last year. And the overall budget is a little over eleven hundred dollars lower in terms of the expenses we're paying. There, again, it's on page twenty. And so we're, we're pretty pleased with this. We think it's pretty realistic. But again, we welcome any input or any questions you may have on it at all. If you have none, it certainly can bring them up later as well, once you've had a chance to look at it a little bit more. If there are any questions on that, I'm sure, go ahead.
That, um, that savings seems to be mostly with the FICA and Medicare tax.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt, but we can't hear you.
Can't hear us?
No, not loud.
Well, I know, there's a cheer here for you.
Though, I'm sure you heard that, it sounds like he's working on it.
Is that better? No.
Are you speaking into the mic?
We're doing, yeah, what they told, can you hear?
It sounds as if they're working on it.
Trying to turn it up, definitely. You can come up though, it's no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you mentioned FICA and Medicare?
Yeah, I'm trying to see where the-
That increased actually, right? From twenty-five, six, seven?
Oh, no, no, that decrease was last year. Alright, I was trying to figure out where your drop, where the drop was.
Uh, mostly it's in group insurance.
Group insurance, yes.
I, a couple of, we changed the way we're budgeting a couple of things this year. One of them would be the deferred comp and one of them is the group insurance. We used to use an average in each department. So every department, you're gonna see some sort of variance on the group insurance line item. Because they're either more, we went down to the detail of whether they had family coverage, husband and wife, single coverage and all that. In this case, their insurance costs less than the average.
So the savings is an accounting change?
Yeah, and it's, it wouldn't be an overall savings, it's just spread out differently. And we did the same thing with deferred comp and postage.
Okay.
Any other questions on the office of the mayor's budget?
Did you question the department, communications?
No.
No, it's, no, we're under the mayor.
That's next, that's next. So I'll turn it over to Renee to present the office of communications.
Yeah, so we don't have a lot of changes from last year. That's just on page twenty-one. And Lisa provided a handout with the salaries, the salary comparisons. So you can see that, if you have that handout, that's on page four. So you can see, we have a couple of new positions, you know, a couple of positions that we're filling. And so with new hires, we're hoping to be able to reduce those salaries back to starting. And so that's, I think, where most of the savings are, in communications. And then in addition to that, last year, we bought the two cameras for the office. And we don't have that expense this year, so that was mixed from the budget. And I wanted to introduce Rob Lee, who's our new communications director. He started on Monday. He is originally from Erie and had moved away when he went to get his master's degree. I think was when you moved away, or maybe a little bit before. And he's been working for, he worked as a journalist. He's also been working the last twenty-four years as a communications director, marketing director. Twenty-four years? Yeah.
Yep, twenty-five, twenty-six.
And so it's good, it's good to have him back in Erie with his family. And we're looking, it's been a busy week already.
Yeah, we're very happy to have you back.
My pleasure to be here and be back in my hometown, working for the city I love.
Great, thank you.
So where were you?
Most recently, Boston, Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center. Prior to that, I was in, I'm staying in New York near West Point for a health system, three hospital health system. For twenty-five years. I did work in Erie, was a reporter at WOKK, a cameraman at Jet TV, for Corey Publishing as an editor and writer. So just glad to be back.
Any other questions on the office of communications?
Did we get an exact description on what the job enticed for the communications director? What is going to be expected? Because I know like when the previous gentleman was here, we didn't quite have it all mapped out. We were still figuring out what they were going to be doing as far as, um, I know like Zoom is still an option if you give enough notice, but the community can't access Zoom. And if we need to do anything as far as, you know, live streaming outside of Facebook Live, is that going to be under him or is that still going to be each department handled, what they're handling?
Each department does their own. That's a lot of work for one person to handle all that. But there's, yeah, there's a whole job description. We can send it to you, we use that to advertise the position.
So, I have a question. We now have listed a community affairs officer and not a liaison to-
It's just the wrong, it's just not the right title. That's the community liaison and the new American liaison. They're the same positions that we had before, the title is not reflected in the budget. Sorry about that, I didn't catch it.
I have a question. What is the timeline for hiring those two liaison positions? Do we anticipate those will be hired before January?
Um, we're working on the job descriptions now. Now that we have a communications director in place, we wanted the person who was taking on that role to be able to participate in the interview and hiring process. And so I would hope that we'd be able to get those posted next week. And I think, you know, it just depends on the applications that we get, whether or not we'll find somebody right away or if it'll take us a little bit longer. But hopefully we'll be able to interview in December.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
And trust me, I'm for fiscal responsibility. But with double-digit inflation, do you think we're going to be able to attract the same kind of talent with a smaller salary?
We're gonna try and we'll see how it goes. We thought if we put forty-five thousand in the budget book and somebody's willing to come for that, then it's, it reflects, it's reflected in the budget book. If we can't get somebody for that amount, we might have to go up to fifty. But we didn't want to put fifty in the budget book. We went back and forth on that.
That's kinda stuff I like you going back and forth on.
We also like to start at a lower number. And then if the person works out, we can always give them an increase. Like after six months, if it's clear that they're working out, they're like going above and beyond to do the job, then we have some leeway to say, you know, you're doing great, we're happy you're here, we're gonna give you a couple thousand dollar raise.
Any other questions on that, so that we can move on and take it from here?
Okay. I do have some concern with how that has been, you know, we get the updates on with the salaries adjusted. I know that there's, you know, a certain amount of range that you're able to do with those adjustments from year to year. But I was looking at the last six years of budgets, and that's why I asked Lisa to put in last year's budgeted salary. Is so that we can see how some of that drifts. We get to these, this point in the year, and we're told that everyone gets a two percent raise. You know, or, you know, some, whatever the percentage is for non-bargaining and management. And then you look back over the last six years and realize, oh my goodness, there's been some drift in some areas that, that goes far beyond what the January two percent is. So then when city council looks at it and we're told that's a two percent, I think it's been a lot easier for us to be like, oh yeah, okay, go with it. But then we didn't know about the five or this, you know, usually it's two to five is the range, it seems to be, that came up in June. And we got an email about it, it was grouped in with something. But we didn't, you know, we're not, we're not catching some of that creep in the budget. Which is part of the reorganization of council and part of the reason of asking Lisa to put those side by side, so that we could be a little more attentive to it.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we have situations where somebody will get a master's degree. And so we wanna recognize that and that increased expertise that they're bringing to the city. Or somebody will take on more responsibility, their role changes, and we need to reflect that in their salary. So there are things like that that happen throughout the year.
Yeah, I think in particular, some of the pushback that council has been, you know, muttering to me or discussing with me, usually comes in some of the roles changing even outside of like, as they're outside of the organization chart and the ordinances as set by council. So that's where some of it gets to be a bit of a push. So, any other questions about communications in the mayor's office?
You go next.
Yeah, okay. Um, I, I don't know if Lori was gonna come out in the presentation for clerk's office and council or not, or-
I told her I was in for all of it, and if anyone had any questions-
Do you wanna go through it?
Yeah.
It's on page eighteen and nineteen?
Alright, for our, uh, for our budget, there's a number of different items that are kept the same that we didn't use. But there was that continued conversation of, do we want it there if we need it? So, um, so professional services, we've almost never used those. We left them in there for the day that we need a, any additional legal or financial help. Although, when looking at some of the solicitor stuff this summer, the county government, for example, has a very different setup than us. Like they can have their own solicitor, ours, all third-class city, has to go through a shared solicitor. So there's some disadvantages where some of the needs aren't necessarily needed or aren't able to be addressed. That number stayed the same, understanding that this year we only spent one thousand one hundred. Education and training, kept that same, once again, only spending ten percent of it this year. But we do have new council members coming on. So the expectation is that that goes up a little bit on these upcoming even years. Communications stayed the same. Office equipment stayed the same. But once again, in all these cases in our office, we generally try to make sure we don't spend it unless absolutely needed. There was some increase in advertising budget, and this is on to page nineteen, at forty fifty-two. Because it looks like with some of these end-of-the-year advertisements, that we might be getting close to being going to over-budget. And then, and then as far as other services and charges, our use of E-code and some of the, um, some of the documentation, those service fees went up. So, and I think it was even a matter of paying for twenty twenty-three usage in twenty twenty-four and then using, paying for twenty twenty-four and twenty-four as well. So there was a couple of things that caused the service fees to go up from what had historically been, you know, much lower. Jumping up to ten thousand's a pretty big jump on that. Otherwise, everything stays pretty much on par with where we were last year, with the hope that we spent very little. Anyone have any questions about the clerk's office and city council budget?
I would just add a comment that this is the year that the salaries increase.
Two council members?
So that was also presented before we knew who necessarily was gonna win elections. And, and we also don't know who the appointment's going to be, and we don't know who the council president's gonna be. So those are all the worst-case scenarios financially as to who's going to get which salaries. So if we appoint someone that's already got four years' experience and if one of the returning people that's been here for a while is president next year, this is all the most, the highest cap to the projected budget. Ideally, or the expectation is that we'll probably be below that as well. Thanks.
Okay, any more questions on clerk and council? We'll move on to, the next thing is general government, page sixty-two. And I'm also going to direct you towards page twenty in your handouts here. Christine?
Can you give the mayor some handout?
Pass it down?
Yeah, this is the budget one.
Thank you.
Additional details.
Okay, good.
What did you say?
Page twenty, yeah.
I don't have a page twenty in the packet handout.
This one?
This one. Yeah.
Sorry, I just brought you to the front of it.
Well, we did double-sided this year. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, mine goes from eighteen forty to page, she said?
The other handout? There's two handouts, one of them it has- Do you have another one, Christine?
Page twenty.
Page twenty. Alright, so page twenty just gives you a little more detail about most of the larger line items on this page. So employee payouts, we calculated next year's payouts based on who we absolutely know is retiring. And comparing it to this year's payouts, we always add a little bit extra for some surprise retirements. And every year, we tend not to add enough extra. So I'm pretty comfortable that this number is, we're not gonna be below this number. Uh, one point three million. The unemployment is based on history. Professional services, there's a list on page twenty in the handout of all the different companies that we pay right now. Audit fees out of this, Berkheimer to administer our taxes and collect our taxes. Employer and place services for pre-employment work. Legal service, there's miscellaneous legal services and fees. And the solicitor goes into that, onto that line too. Manufacturers Association dues, miscellaneous banking, legal and professional, that we just don't know about yet. The Central Square annual maintenance charges, that's our software that we use for billing, financials and payroll. Actuarial services, our security, lobby security. We have a miscellaneous line. And we always end up doing a study or two that we didn't expect to do. Industrial appraisal, we were supposed to do that this year and we didn't get to it. I was short-staffed all year and we didn't get that done, so we moved it into next year. They'll do an appraisal of all of our assets citywide. And there's a house, there's a hundred thousand for a housing study. And I don't know if you wanna talk about that at all?
Yeah, we've been working on a number of initiatives related to permanent support of housing, homelessness, affordable housing, workforce housing. And what we really wanna do is develop a housing strategy. And so I've been talking to some of our community partners about potentially matching some funding from the city so that we can bring in a consultant that has experience doing that to lead that effort. So I'm hoping we actually won't need the whole hundred that's been set aside, but I don't have confirmation of that yet.
What are, so, like for example, the Manufacturers Association. You know, what are some of the benefits on some of these, like, membership and fees that we have? Like, why the, why the Manufacturers Association's at, like, the chamber or?
We, we belong to the chamber as well.
Is that just a lower fee?
It's under, it's under Economic Development Department, I believe. It's twenty-five thousand.
It's basically what it's coded to, because down below on this page, there's a bunch of different other organization fees that have their own account number.
Yeah.
So these are just things that don't have their own account number.
So, go ahead, after you, sir. Are we actively going back to these people who are only paying pennies on a dollar in lieu of taxes?
The county, over, um, the county, and we work with the county and the school district. Are you talking about getting pilot agreements?
Let me pick one out of the air. Maristiris University, tax nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, they're paying four eighty-four. Parking Authority, three sixty-eight, they're paying one eighty-four. School district, and they hit us hard as citizens anyway. And we're giving them a big break. If they're gonna hit us as hard as they're hitting us, then they oughta pay a fair buck.
You're on page twelve?
Yeah. City of Erie School District, tax should be one, one million seven hundred fifty-seven, they're paying eight seventy-eight.
But they're, but they're nonprofits and government entities, so we'll-
I'm just saying, they're, they're paying in lieu of. We should let them know that in lieu of should be with, with the economy, that's all I'm saying.
We should be glad about the pilot agreements, because they're actually paying something every year versus there's a long list of nonprofit organizations in the city that aren't paying anything.
Should they be updated, that's all. Because my tax goes up every year.
We can't just increase it.
Haven't happened five years.
Oh, if they have those damn increases, they don't count, right?
They don't give fees.
Negotiated, yeah.
Fees, no taxes?
Not your taxes.
Okay, so can we, back to the general government expenses. So I think we left off at the professional services. We've got an education and training budget. That, that'll cover any trainings that go across departments or anything like that where the departments don't have time or don't have the budget for it. Other services and charges. We've got Bank of New York annual bond fees, charge to audit the cost allocation plan, dog licenses, interpreter services, Erie County Data Center, Act thirty-two Tax Collectors Association, bond audit and appraisal.
Wait, the dog licenses, that's a-
It's just a, I don't know how it ended up in there. It's been there for years and it's just the cost to purchase the dog licenses.
You can buy a forever license and then bother renewing it every year.
Uh, the League of Cities membership, PALRAZ membership, Quantella, which is the public wifi, U.S. Conference of Mayors, Community Access CamTV, the Time Clock Plus software. We've got a risk management allocation, that's for the liability.
Is the Quantella, is that, because that's been expanding. There, there's some new wifi hubs that I've heard going up on State Street. Like is that, has that price gone, changed or anything?
No, this was the price that was negotiated. And we were working on installing all those access points, but that was all part of it.
Uh, we've gotten a contingency line item for contracts that are still not settled. Right now, we're negotiating fire. Council of Governments dues, the COG dues, economic and community, the DID dues. Fair Housing, we give them fifteen thousand every year. EMTA, cable access TV. We pay the gas at the Erie Zoo, that's a rule, that goes back forever that we've been doing that. Regional Chamber and growth partnership and real estate taxes. So that's everything that goes into the general government. We're up-
You, you got excited about the new zoo thing and nodded along. We took a, a gas well on their property and we take all that gas and then we pay for their gas now. So it's sort of a, it's, it's not necessarily such a support as much as it's like an even trade-off.
Well, they found out the school board was tapping into the same, same gas hole, so to speak.
I don't think that's what it's called.
So they should pay half.
Alright, anyways.
Okay, so the main, main increases are employee payouts, risk management, professional services and other services. And every, and just everything's going up. We're, um, we also added this Time Clocks Plus, that's, that's new. We just, we're in the process of converting to a digital time clock system. So that, that is an additional cost.
Is that gonna be a yearly additional cost?
Yeah. Okay, so any questions on general government expenses? Next up, we got finance and the associated departments, if you go to page twenty-eight. Next up, we got finance and the associated departments, if you go to page twenty-eight. Okay, the Office of Director, really not much to see there. Got the same expenses that we budgeted last year and didn't spend any of them. What Chuck said about budgeting for things and maybe you need the money and maybe don't. The only other difference would be salary. Page twenty-nine, nope, that's not it. Page thirty-one is the Office of Accounts, Finance and Budget. And that includes all of the accountants. There's two ASME accountants and four, or, yeah, four finance accountants. The, the wages have gone down because we've replaced, I think, three people in that department and started them at the starting salaries. And everything else is pretty much.
Is that relevant to bring ground, what's deferred compensation?
Deferred compensation's like a four, it's like a 401K, in our case, it's a four.
Four oh three B.
Oh, three B, yeah.
I got it.
Yeah. Okay, and like I said, all the other expenses are down as far as, you know, the office supplies, repair and maintenance and all that, so. Any questions on accounting, finance and budget?
So you have, you have the new, the grant accountant, that's new?
Yes, the grant accountant is new. I was doing that last year in addition to the assistant and director position.
That's why you got the job.
That's how we saved a lot of money last year, but that, that makes a big difference in the wages for next year.
And what other additional positions did we replace?
We, we didn't add any, we, we replaced our grant accountant. Everybody else moved up when I moved into the director role, so all of our other people are still here, but they're in different positions and we did rework the names of those positions. So if you were to look at last year's budget, you might, you'd see a different list of type, well, the descriptions are different. So it's a little hard to understand, but.
Was that Hoffman that left in this group, the grant?
No, no, she was in local match. Yeah. I lost Staff Accountant last August and she was only here for four months, so you might not have known her. And we lost the Director. And then, you know, we hired an Assistant Director, a Grant Accountant and a Staff Accountant this year. So.
What about cash management, is that, is that fall on you? Is that just you or is there other, is there anyone else on your staff that's responsible for that?
Well, my, no, one of my ASME employees does all the banking, like does all the transferring of funds to pay bills, make payroll, things like that. Brings in the wire transfers and reconciles all the bank accounts. That would be the, that would be the Senior Clerk. Which doesn't really sound like somebody that handles all your money, but it is.
Is there, is there room in your budget, like professional services or anything to get more active cash management, given the interest rate climate that we currently have?
We could build some room in there, I'm sure.
I mean, now, three years ago, this, that, the suggestion would be a waste of time, the interest rates were one percent or two.
Right.
Like I was just looking at our bonds today and you could buy those at a discount on the market right now because of our rating. And, and really, I mean, you're looking at, as long as it's compliant with Act ten, you're looking at, you can buy government bonds, you can buy a lot of things that are starting to get up to the point of like a ten percent return in some of these cases. Stuff that's ten percent might not be what you want to touch. But, but our bonds are trading at a discount and an eight percent. And those could be actually bought back, which is wild, given where they were before. I know that in, you've been talling the investment income and you made those adjustments that we talked about back in June. I think we're looking, was it one point eight that we were planning this year?
Yeah, that's.
But with the, with the, the stuff that, like, I know that what we're spending in Public Works with ARP money probably isn't happening this year at the same rate and that we got some plans for twenty twenty-five. I know there's a lot of things that is in-house spending that is ARP twenty-five, twenty-six. It may be really worthwhile for you to build into your budget some sort of professional services for cash management for what, I mean, the ARP funds, we could probably run fifteen million through revenue replacement. And if it's five percent, is the four and a half, five percent, is what you're getting in bank accounts right now?
Four point seven five to five.
So if you can get fifteen through revenue replacement and squeeze out three percent by active cash management by finding eight percent on the bond market instead of five percent in the interest rates, you're looking at four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase to the, to the revenue on side. As much as we're trying to look at the savings side, the revenue side might be a bigger, a bigger pinata to beat right now. But that comes in your department and I'm not sure you have the resources to even attack it.
There are, there are organizations that are actively helping municipalities do this kind of thing. And I could reach out to some of them.
See commercials, we make money when you make money. We get professional people to keep an eye on it and tell us when is it good to do it. It's Morgan Stanley or whoever. Simplistic, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Check it out.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's particular.
Person to do it, you need a company that already does it every day.
Yeah, and it's particular, I mean, we, we saw this with the water prepayment, you can't just invest it. Act ten for state law is really restrictive. But state bonds, government bonds, like there's a bunch of areas that are right now trading at a pretty high premium because of the interest rate market that us getting four point seven five in a checking account and having, what's our, what's our cash flow, forty-four million right now or thirty-four was the average?
Average, yeah.
And then the money that's in ARP, I mean, that's, we still have tons there.
Yeah, that thirty-four is just general government. There's probably right about now, there's about thirty-five million in ARP.
I'm sorry, how much?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-three, thirty-five, something like that.
There's, I just want to make sure that if, this opportunity wasn't there three years ago with where the interest rates are. So I, you know, it's not necessarily built into the budget, I would think.
Right.
But, and we saw that you were productive at it in May and June when you were switching the bank accounts over. But it seems like something where while the money's in the bank with ARP, while the money's in the bank with water prepayment, that a more aggressive cash management system before we run out of money would be, now's a pretty prime time to address it. And I just want to make sure you have the resource to do it. If, if my quick math, I said three percent squeeze on fifteen million, that's four hundred and fifty thousand. I think we can put more money in if you can produce four hundred and fifty thousand, which sounds like a pretty reasonable goal with ARP funds through revenue replacement.
Yeah. All right, I'll look into that.
Thanks.
Okay, page thirty-two, Office of Payroll. And another case where we've had turnover and you'll see that the rates have, the salaries have dropped. Because we are, those are ASME positions and ASME people start at seventy percent of the pay scale that, for their grade level. And as far as their expenses go.
Do we need to increase our education and training budget with all these new people? Or just make sure we spend that thirty-five thousand this year?
Yeah, I mean, with the payroll people, I'm talking to our software provider. We're also in the middle of a software conversion and we're getting close to the end of it. There'll be some training involved and I asked them for some specific training for the payroll people. But yeah, it wouldn't hurt to put some education in there. I think we can probably cover it out of the general government budget though.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, page thirty, let's see, did I cover everything or the? Okay, and I'm going to move on to the IT budget then. IT's on page thirty-three. And in your council book, handout book, if you want to look at page nineteen, it has a more detailed explanation of everything that is coming through the IT budget. And I'll point out to you that there's kind of a shift from line item forty fifty-six to forty fifty-nine. Forty fifty-nine's going down, forty fifty-six is going up on your budget pages. And the reason for that is that the way we use our computers has been shifting over the last couple of years. We have less onsite hardware and we're using more online programs. So we're shifting from repair and maintenance equipment to service contracts and recurring software costs. So that's why those numbers look a little wonky technically.
Question, I know that as a council person, I hardly use the laptop. If we were to give an option for a tablet versus a laptop, is that an option? Like, because I know with younger council members coming on, they're going to want a tablet versus a laptop. I use my cellphone more than anything.
Yeah.
But I think that if we could have the option, a lot of people would cop out for the tablet. I know I would, because I would rather read my emails through a larger device.
Yeah.
And not an actual laptop.
Yeah.
Because it's just, I don't have a station to go. So I didn't know if that was something that council would be talking about in our own department or if that would be in IT situations.
Those are usually purchased through IT, so if that's what you want, we can definitely.
Look into it.
Talk to IT about it or it, it could be an either or thing, not everybody has to have the same device.
Right, okay. I would like to talk or look into it further because I know.
Give Brian a call.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, and this is the same staff that's been there since I started, pretty much. Well, Rob's a little bit newer, but not, not a lot of turnover there. So the salaries are stable. The group insurance went down because, like I said, it's just the mix between family coverage and single coverage and all of that. And most of their expenses, with the exception of these two that are, we'll talk about at the bottom, have pretty much stayed the same. The communications budget is increasing and you're going to hear that for just about every department in the city because we are, we're adding a lot of cell phones and a lot of tablets and a lot of wifi capability because of the push to, the switch to GIS. So that's been coming for several years. Do you, do you want to explain that a little better?
We'll be on, well, we've been on, working on onboarding GIS for the last year, two years. And it's finally getting to the point where we're going to be able to launch it in the new year. That's going to require our code enforcement officers, some of our engineers, our public works staff to have tablets so that as everything is digitized, they'll be able to see it on the tablet as opposed to bringing paper maps everywhere. And then also with the new software, for instance, if a code enforcement officer is out, they'll be able to see the Blight Dashboard on their device, they'll be able to make updates to specific properties and it'll relay directly into the software. So we're really looking forward to that. It's going to be a huge improvement. It's also going to impact Citizen Response Center because that will now also be GIS enabled. So we'll be able to see, you know, if a certain number of complaints are coming, are coming through and they're in a, in a specific area, we'll be able to analyze that and see, you know, if there's an issue that we need to fix. Or if several people have called in about the same issue, we'll be able to see that. And the public will be able to see that as well and they'll be able to see the process for how things are getting resolved and where things are in the timeline.
When you talk to code enforcement, people like that, have they brought forth the idea of being able to be certified to carry a weapon?
That has come up in conversations, yes.
Are we going any closer to that? These people are walking into buildings that haven't been really inhabited with normal people for a long time. So they're actually very close to police as far as putting your life online.
I think, I think we ended up purchasing vests for the code enforcement officers.
We did.
It's, it's something that we really have to look at because of course it brings concern for training and whether or not somebody has the.
Our insurance policy will probably go up.
Yeah, I mean, whether or not somebody's been trained enough to be able to use a weapon as opposed to having the weapon used against them, you know?
The municipality will probably, will have their hands tied on that. Yeah.
Just asking because it's been thrown at me a few times.
I'm just saying, because if you have, as a municipality, the people you employ have to be. Well, not certified to carry, they also have to be municipal police officers. You're going to have to go to.
Act one twenty training and certification.
More than carry.
Two thirty-five, yeah, one twenty and probably just.
I know that, I, I just have to, have to get certified on the logic of carrying a gun and how to deal with it.
Otherwise, I have, you know, paid people twenty bucks an hour and have my own police force already.
You have decided a point.
And I think a couple of the fire department will also have tablets.
Yeah, oh yeah, fire department.
Right.
The inspectors.
Right. So yeah, everybody's communication bills are going up. Except for the departments that aren't going to have the GIS, the need for the GIS. Okay, so the, we're still on the IT department. And if you want to look in your handbook and you want to just take a look at what we're, these are some of the repair and maintenance contracts and some of the software that we're paying for every year and the, the kind of hardware and other services that we use. We usually, we're replacing five servers, every year we replace equipment. We usually end up buying twenty or thirty computers every year. Monitors, printers, laptops or tablets, battery backup replacements and, and just other miscellaneous stuff. For the repair and maintenance services up above, it's antivirus, anti-spam, phone system maintenance agreement, firewall maintenance, virtual server management, network management, software, software as a service, like the, the different services that we have, Ecode, City grows, all those softwares that we buy. Office three sixty-five for all of our users. Mailbox, email, there's, there's a lot more, but the Zoom, all those things like that, so. And they.
Jasmine brought up a good idea about the tablet.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got this half-assed phone for four years, I only use to try to get.
Your email.
Emails from.
So if you want to just look through this and Brian detailed out some of the twenty-three projects that they've done and, and other things that they're looking at.
I have a question. Where's the software and services and Ecode?
Where's the software and services in Ecode, CityGrows? Are we still contracting with CityGrows? And are they still supposedly updating our website?
No.
CityGrows doesn't update our website. We do still contract with them. We have all of our applications through them for authorities, boards and commissions. All the authorities, boards and commissions, that's the way we get the applications. We do the dog licensing through them. There's a, there are a bunch of ways, people pay bills through CityGrows. We have, we used ARP funding to redo the website and we're contracting with ReVise, which is the website developer. They do, primarily, they do websites for municipalities. So there was an RFP that went out. We interviewed several companies and we picked them as the best one. So we're currently in the design phase of the website and building the backend, figuring out the, the map of all the different things that are on our current website, what we need to get rid of, what's outdated, what's missing and where things should be so it's more intuitive for users.
So we'll still need these other companies when the new website is designed or?
Yeah, that's all separate.
These are links on our website that do other, do specific services for us.
I know the links weren't functioning or whatever, that people are having a hard time getting to them and it's been a historic problem. That's why I was asking if we're still dealing with that particular software company.
No, I think the, the CityGrows links are fine. I think the issue is that our website is really outdated.
It's not user-friendly.
Yeah, it's.
Hard to navigate.
It is, it's very difficult, so.
So the goal is to get a more user-friendly website, which I've been hearing for the last two years as Chair of IT Innovation, is that we're going to be having a more user-friendly website one day.
Yeah, should be in twenty twenty-four. I don't know what month yet, but it's coming.
Hopefully soon.
What happens to the old equipment when you buy a new computer every year? What happens to the other stuff that's already used?
Well, normally it's obsolete, but we buy the new equipment. But I, I'm, I'm not certain on that. That might be a good thing to check with IT on because if you've got any ideas.
I just bought like an iPhone four for five bucks for my daughter from the school district, so. Might wanna look into it.
Well, I think we send the phones back, but as far as the, the computers.
If you walk through IT, they got a lot of stuff.
They do got, they, they do have a lot of stuff there. So that's all of, all of the expense items, A through E.
I, I'm just looking at the pages. Can we get the, can we get that to match our ordinances for the organization chart? There's a couple of them that, that are shifted there as far as, as far as matching ordinance one seventeen that lays out the different offices and departments. We put a resolution out there in May about this.
Right. Okay, so you're talking about the communications department being under the mayor's office and the payroll being under finance.
Just as the ordinance says.
Or HR being under finance.
Yeah, just as the ordinance has it all lined up. If, if the budget can match the ordinance, that'd be great.
Can match.
Especially, especially if the city council has just done our reorganization where we have liaisons that'll be a little tighter on this.
Okay.
It, it just, it's gonna make things a little clearer for all of us.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
And we were gonna go over the, just the general fund revenue tonight since, and I think we have time. Okay, it's pages sixteen and seventeen?
Of the big book?
Of the big book, yes.
We're doing a first reading on the budget, so on Wednesday.
Do you want me to get that to you by tomorrow?
I mean, it's, it's just page four of this, it's a quick wrap-up thing. But we'll, we could amend it in caucus just as well, you know?
Okay.
But if I could just have those numbers before caucus.
Okay, I'll get those numbers to you.
Thanks.
All right, so I was just gonna do a combination of the council, the budget book and pages sixteen and seventeen. And the, the real estate taxes are pretty much the same as they were this year. But if you want to go to page thirteen, I think we have a detail of.
In this.
In this book. I'll take you through our collection history. No, I can't. So, that's the mileage rate.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay, so, yeah, we're at the same mileage rate, so our real estate taxes are not gonna change. But if you look to page fourteen, that, that details out our collection percentages. And right now, we've been pretty much running about ninety percent of our taxes collected by year end. And this year, last year we were at eighty-nine point eight-five for the whole year and this year we're at eighty-nine point nine-eight at the end of October. I don't know what that means. I don't know if we're gonna collect any more taxes or much more in taxes for the rest of the year, but we, we just estimated twenty-four at ninety percent because that's what it's been. And there, you will, you'll see a large increase in special levy. This is thirty-one forty-eight, thirty-one fifty, thirty-one fifty-one and thirty-one eighty-three. Those accounts are all income taxes and they have, they have increased considerably. We had quite a dip because of the pandemic. And honestly, last year was kind of a guess, a big guess as to how much our, our income taxes would increase. We just applied a percentage hoping that a lot of people would come back to work and come back to the office and it exceeded our expectations. And the next year's numbers are based on this year's projected numbers with a little bit of an increase because people are getting raises, hopefully.
And area insurance is returning to work.
Yeah, plus, yeah, they're returning to work full-time and, except for fifty-three days.
Right.
Right, fifty-two days. Yeah. Other things to note, real estate penalty and interest. I, I honestly can't guess at that, so we're, we're using the same budget as last year. Going down to the next section, licenses and permits. The thirty-two sixteen, building demo moving permits, we're showing a drop in that. Right now, year-to-date, we're only at four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of a, of a seven hundred thousand dollar budget. So that, that jumps up and down based on major constructions. Like in twenty-one, we had area insurance building permit. Twenty-two, we had Hammett and St. Vincent doing some projects and the project on Fifth and State. There's really nothing huge on the horizon right now that code enforcement could tell me about, so I was conservative with this figure. And the, the curb, let's see, curb sidewalk ends permits, street permits, thirty-two seventeen. We've removed the degradation fees from this number. So with that, that revenue is going into a fund to be spent on degradation. So that, that came out of here.
Just off the top of anyone's head, if they recall, what year are we in the LERTA? What year are we in since we passed the LERTA?
We started it in two thousand and nineteen.
July.
Yeah, and actually, there's some LERTA, there is something, there's a LERTA handout here. We can take a look at that.
Yeah, because I just was thinking with opportunity zones and however many years we still have on the LERTA, if that could potentially entice anybody to do any projects and then maybe the building and demo moving permits would change.
All right, shout it out if you find it. Fifteen? I'll be spelled it out, okay, fifteen. Page fifteen. So, now we put prior LERTAs in here, all the data that we had. And what you have here is the number of parcels and the expiration of that LERTA. So in this case, this latest LERTA starts bearing fruit in twenty-nine, twenty twenty-nine with that two hundred. We only had a few properties that were approved for LERTA back in nineteen.
What's the amount calculated on?
It's the.
Building cost or is it assessed?
It's the assessed cost and the assessed, it's the cost with the improvement or the estimated assessed cost with the improvement. And the, or estimated cost with the improvement versus the assessed value.
Gotcha.
So if you're putting an addition on and it's an additional ten thousand dollars and then in the third, fourth column, we're applying our mileage to that. So, yeah, we've gotten quite, a bit of a slow start. And you have to remember that in twenty, the pandemic hit and a lot of things slowed down. And then building costs, cost of building materials went up. So basically, everything that's happened since then has had a breaking effect on this, I think. But, yeah, there's your LERTA statistics.
Thank you. And since twenty nineteen, since July twenty nineteen, there's been about two hundred and ninety-six million dollars invested in those projects, residential and commercial.
The next section, we already went through licenses and permits. The cable TV is what it is. These, these grants in the next section, total grant section.
I just wanna give a little warning on the cable TV thing. Do we get that as a percentage of what they have for subscribers or is that a, a long-term? How's that calculated?
It's, it's a percentage, yeah.
That's going down.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a millennial, I'm just saying, that's going down.
I've been waiting for.
It's also going down as by next year, but half the city has access to fiber optic internet.
Yeah, I've been expecting it to drop more than it has, really.
Restream, we don't have cable.
Next year, that's gonna be tricky.
Yes, it will. The, the grant section, we're, we're, we're looking at pretty much a similar revenue to what we got this year, but it might be spaced out differently. We never, we can't predict all of these grants.
Somehow I've gone on the wrong page again.
We're on page sixteen of the budget book, the revenue.
Let's pass that.
Next page, right there.
Okay.
The payment in lieu of taxes is on page eleven of the handouts.
Before you go to the, I wanted to comment on the grant. With us having the new grant person, I got an email from Renee about a bunch of grant money we're gonna be applying for. So it's like that number could always change and fluctuate, which is always welcomed because grant money's good money.
Yeah.
So I like, you know, that we never know what that for sure number is.
Well, and that's just a couple of grants that can be brought into our general fund. The bulk of our grant income exists in, well, CDBG grant, the ARP grant, and those are handled in different funds, so.
Yeah, a lot of the grants that we are applying for are not for the general fund but to do the extra things that we can't afford to do through the general fund.
And each of these funds has a specific revenue and a specific budget that we have to follow. If we diverge from that budget, we have to. We have to, and if we, if we change the budget, oh, we have to do a budget modification with the grantor, you know, whether that be the Department of Labor or FEMA or CDBG or. ARP's the only one that we can pretty much change with council's approval because we report what we've done after the fact with the ARP money. But the rest of them, you can't diverge from what you ask. You ask for a specific amount of money for a specific purpose. And like I said, most of that has, is, is housed in the, they're specific funds that only, we, each grant has its own specific fund, so. The zoning fees, we up, we increased those last year, if you remember. Or a lot of these fees on the licenses and permits and the, I, I kinda backtracked up to the license and permits area. But any of those ones that are receiving extra revenues are kind of eclipsed by the fact that our building permits are down and our, we took the degradation fees out. Did you wanna look at the payment in lieu of taxes? We have page eleven, I think. Twelve?
Oh, there are some on.
Oh, page twelve is your tax-exempt properties, so sorry.
No.
So I'll, I'll go over both page eleven and twelve. These are, page eleven are actual agreements that we have with these owners of properties and they give us fifty percent of the assessed tax every year. A lot of nonprofits will commit to that. And we did last year start, put together a committee of people to, from the county, the school district and the city to start working on this. But I think, kinda lost track of that due to turnover. So we're gonna have to go back to that this year.
Yep.
The next page, twelve of fifty-three, these are just the top twenty tax-exempt properties. I go through the tax roll and picked up all the tax-exempt properties. These are, this is just what their tax would be if they were paying it. They're not actually paying any of this.
When I brought that up earlier, I wasn't trying to make a joke. I was serious. Why you don't, you know, they realize that all their expense is going up.
Yeah. Well, the pilots, pilots are traditionally fifty percent of their assessed tax. But on this other page, like I said, this is, this is where we need to basically get. And, and you can't negotiate with these property owners without Brian, the county and the school district into it. So, yeah, that, it's, it's a long-term project, but it, it has an escape desk. Let's see, going on to, not much going on in the fees. If you go up to the fines, traffic fines are up. I mean, not traffic fines, parking ticket fines are up.
Because they wrote one double?
Yeah, that wasn't, I was, I was happy to see that they didn't decrease. We did change the rates on the street parking versus the metered parking. And it, but it's not, the, the revenue's up because we've written more tickets to. So it appears to have been revenue neutral and we've written more tickets. So, um, it, it appears to have been revenue neutral and we've written more tickets. I, I think you remember last year, uh, there.
It wasn't staffed for four months.
What was that?
It wasn't staffed for four months.
Right, right. We didn't write tickets for, we were ha, writing half the number of tickets for a lot of last year, so, so that's increasing. The investment income, we've had a big long talk about that already. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at different, um, organizations that can work with municipal governments on investing. But we're, uh, doubling last, this twenty-twenty-three's investment income and, uh...
Which is a positive.
Yeah, yeah, it's great. That helped us through, uh, twenty-three.
Doubling, I mean, we're budgeting for fifteen times as much as you got last year.
Last year, yeah, we're, we're, yeah.
The budget's fifteen times higher.
It is. Yep.
So much for not touching it.
Yep. I was just trying to get it to stop buzzing. Yeah.
I ain't touch a line.
All right, so the reimbursement section. The, um, top, the top line of the reimbursement section is, uh, CDBG. And that, uh, we have a handout on page nine. And we're gonna increase, we're gonna have to increase that for the final budget because somebody got overwritten, and, uh, we missed a person on here, so. Oops. So, yeah, page, uh, actually, it's, is it nine or ten?
Nine.
Okay. Yeah, so this is who you, who we're reimbursing and the percentages at which we're reimbursing them. We've got, you know, the, all, all of the DECD staff, and some of them work a hundred percent on HUD projects, and some of them are only at, uh, you know, s- forty percent. So, um, we calculate their salaries and, uh, we get reimbursed every quarter for these. And you can see it says, uh, one million two twenty-eight, and, uh, the, the revenue line says one million one seventeen. So we're gonna add a hundred thousand to revenues. Now, the reimbursement closer to the bottom, uh, thirty-six seventy-nine, the ARPA, ARPA reimbursement is on page eight.
In the handout?
Yeah, in the handouts. We've got the juvenile, the police, the fir, the top, uh, two-thirds is police. We've got the juvenile unit, uh, neighborhood action team, the crisis unit, and the adminis, adminis, uh, the bottom part, the bottom fourth is, uh, the administrative reimbursement. And, uh, we're gonna get two point nine million this year.
In reimbursement?
Yeah.
And the GIS administrator is Erin Pence. Um, she started on Monday, so that's no longer vacant.
These new people are coming to our meeting to, for us to meet them on Wednesday?
They won't be here at night. We'll have to wait till the morning meeting. Yeah, we'll wait till the morning meeting.
Can we pay them overtime?
Do you want us to pay them overtime?
It's being facetious.
I know.
They should just be, you know, accustomed that on the morning meeting, if we have new hires, that they come down and we can welcome them to the city.
Yeah, it's nice to see the first bunch of people.
Yeah. I, I, I'll, I'll say one thing, though. It was kind of awkward having them have the backs to the audience. Like, the, yeah, we might want to think of a different way to do that, but it's a little awkward. Yeah.
So, yeah, question. So, these, uh, police reimbursements are coming from, uh, government agencies and grants, or where's the reimbursements?
Oh, where, where?
ARP.
Which page are you on?
Eight.
That's all ARP. Now, the other police reimbursements that are coming from grants are other organizations like the DA task force, the, uh, county, um, uh, I, I can't think of all of them. There's about six or seven, uh, other organizations that give us money towards our police overtime, and that gets credited directly to their overtime to try to keep the police overtime down. And we have some handouts that we can give you, uh, when we do the police, that will tell you how many of the... Is there one in the handout book?
Yeah.
What page is that? Page twenty-five.
Because I don't remember us appropriating money for the NAT.
That was in there.
So it was in there other than the...
Yeah, got it. The neighborhood action team, yes.
Okay, so, so we're supposed to hi, be hiring seventeen new police officers, and I heard that, uh, we hired seventeen, but we lost seventeen?
No.
Or something like that, right?
No.
We lost about three of them.
Three.
And then we have two on military leave, and we have some on medical leave, so we haven't been able to reach the full one hundred and ninety-four yet, but we're working on it. We, but we were still able to activate.
I think they said the same amount of actual officers were on the street as before we hired the seventeen.
That's not true.
No. Um, we'll, we'll cover all that when we do the police.
If you're counting just the patrol officers, yes, because these are specialized units.
But they're on the street.
Right, that, they're, they are on the street.
Yeah, the same number on the street.
And, uh, okay, the, uh, police reimbursements, the other grants that we get money from, um, is on page twenty-four of your handouts. The Attorney General, County Area Drug and Alcohol, Aggressive Driving, U.S. Marshals, Community Based Crime Reduction. You can see, you can read all those. And like I said, that, that directly reduces our overtime expense. Any, any other questions about revenue? Or anything that we've talked about tonight?
Can we get a complete readout of where the ARP money is right now? It'd be kind of interesting to see.
We do that every month. Yeah.
I know there's buckets there, but I don't know what's out of the bucket or what's in the bucket.
Right, we know what's been spent, and, uh, uh, we, we do a council, a report every month, and I think we...
We have to for a lyric.
Yeah.
I have a question. So how, what's the complement of police that we have right now?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but that's what we'll cover when the police are here for their budget session.
We're supposed to have one ninety-four, but the, people keep retiring and, uh...
Takes a while to do the background checks.
And, uh, we're, I know we've got three starting next week, right, or?
They're on the agenda for Wednesday.
Three on the agenda next week.
People get hurt.
Yeah, and then we've got people on military leave and, uh, long-term COVID and...
So do we pay the ones like, ones on military leave? I, so does that come out of our pot, or how?
Yeah, we still, yes.
Do they get their full salary while they're on military leave?
The federal government pays their salaries when they're on medical leave, or on military leave and, uh...
Okay, so it shouldn't be reflected on...
We hold their job, but they can't be filled.
Right, so it shouldn't, so it shouldn't be reflected in our, like, in, in our, in our charges.
But we pay somebody else overtime to work that job, so. Yeah.
Okay, 'cause, uh, theoretically speaking, okay, if we're at one ninety-three and we were at one...
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, and if we were unable to secure more money, there was supposed to be a drawdown. Um, so the question would be, they ever said that eight to ten people would, a year would be retiring? Uh, it, it would seem that, so, we'll get in that tomorrow when they come, but it would seem that these numbers are nowhere near what it would be in order for there to be a drawdown and us to be back at the same complement, uh, by the end of...
Oh, we're on target.
Yeah.
Yep. You'll, you'll see all that when they do their presentation.
Yes.
Good job, Elise. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.